Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 6, 2023 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission. I will now call this meeting to order. Mark Atkins is going to lead us in prayer and Charles will lead us in the prayer. He'll be a little standing.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we just come to you today thankful for everything that you give us each day of our lives, Father, especially this last week when we got to celebrate the freedom of our country. Father, we know the world's getting a little upside down. We know you're in control of everything and we are just so blessed and thankful that we have freedom here in the good old USA to live our lives with the freedom that we are so humbly given. Father, we ask that you go with us through this meeting, give us discernment, give us wisdom, help us guide the dealings of the town, continue to watch over those employees and our fire department, police department who are out there doing the day-to-day work, keep them safe with a hedge of protection. Go with us now. We ask for forgiveness of all of our sins. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Okay, thanks, Mark and Charles. Citizens comments? Okay, our next item is the minutes and we'll be looking at the approval of the minutes of the June 1, 2023 meeting and the June 14, 2023 special called meeting. The commission, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion to approve the minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of June 1 and June 14 of 2023, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes are approved. Now on to old business. The first item is annexation, zoning and plan of service request. This comes from Joe Haddix who's requested this to be deferred for two months.
That is correct.
Okay, so with that, if it's the pleasure of the commission to defer this, I'll entertain a motion or if it's the pleasure not to, I'll also entertain that motion.
Motion to defer for two months.
Have a motion to defer for two months. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to defer for two months. Any further discussion? All those in favor of deferring this request of annexation and zoning and plan of service, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been deferred. We're now on to new business. Our first item is a rezoning request and this comes from Nicole Vaughn, 12630 Old Nashville Highway, rezoning from R2 to C2.
Yes, this is a rezoning request on Old Nashville Highway. It's about fifty-nine hundredths of an acre. Currently zoned R2, requested to be rezoned C2. Shrining zoning is a mix of C2 and R2 as well as the DeLacy Place PRD, which is on the kind of south and southeast of the property. The land use plan for this area is the Old Nashville Highway corridor character area, which would promote a mix of neighborhood retail and service uses as well as townhomes and other multifamily development in this area. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Old Nashville Highway as a minor arterial and adequate right-of-way does exist for that road. There is an existing house on this property. It does not meet current setback requirements along Todd Lane and Johnson Street, which is legally nonconforming. It existed prior to zoning in Smyrna, so it is legally nonconforming. The applicant has indicated that the house would be removed as a part of the development of the property. I believe that's all that I have at this time.
Okay, questions for Kevin concerning this rezoning request?
Kevin, do we have any idea yet what the intended use might be?
I'm not even aware of the intended use at this time, no.
And I'm assuming if that were to rezone, we could address any kind of necessary buffering later?
We could. You would certainly have to have it on the back property where it does the but the R2 zoning there. You do have C2 on the other side for the most part and then of course Johnson Street. Certainly you could look at that as well as access and all those things when we see a site plan.
Other questions for Kevin?
Kevin, since it's so close to Todd Lane, if they wanted an access on Old Nashville Highway, would that go through the town or is that?
Oh, it's all, it would all come through the town. There's no state highway.
Since there's already a road there, would it be?
No, I mean, Old Nashville Highway is not a state route.
No, I mean, since there is a road there, Todd Lane, just to keep another, you have a road and then another road or entrance into that property.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to look at that, kind of what the proposed actual use is and the site plan. We have to look at all that with the site plan, but certainly it's kind of with kind of an odd triangle shaped track and you got frontage on two sides, two of the three sides. We just have to look at that with the site plan and, you know, what's across the street. You've got JP Sanders Lane directly across the street as well as, you know, what development could be over there and then you have obviously the Todd Lane side as well. You do have the townhome portion of that development does not have access directly to Todd Lane other than there's an internal street that's going to be extended through there. And so you also have the C2 on the other side that will have to be looked at as well when the site plan comes through. So I understand exactly what you're saying. The way Johnson Street comes into Todd right there, you're going to have to be careful with the access point or you'll get a lot of conflicts right there right out of Old Nashville Highway. But we'll just have to look at that when the proposed, you know, the site plan comes in.
Kevin, in the C2, what type of setbacks would we be looking at from, well, I guess, Old Nashville and Todd?
Thirty-five feet on both of those sides.
And is, and I know it's building size dependent on what would actually go there, but in my mind that would kind of, on .59 acres, that would maybe limit the size of the building and parking per se to meet that.
Yeah, surely the parking, you probably would see more parking geared toward Old Nashville and Todd Lane and in the building kind of in the back side, back kind of the back part of the building for a property. Again, depending on what the use is, as to how much parking they would have to have and all that, obviously, but you probably are going to have, the existing house where it's at, you're probably not going to have that. You're going to have something shifted to the north, northwest somewhat and probably a little bit closer to Old Nashville Highway, quite frankly.
What type of buffer would this require if it were C2 and would it be any different if it were, say for instance, a C4? C or D?
It would be a type C for C2. I don't have the ordinance in front of me. I don't, I think it would be the same either way.
Okay.
I think.
We could request it if it wasn't.
Right, you could certainly require more at the time. Once you see what the actual use is, is it a, you know, a drive-through restaurant or something like that, that would probably want more than if it's a, you know, on some sort of office or something.
What's the piece just north of Todd Lane that's not requested? From Todd Lane over to the piece being requested, is that part of, is that part of the others, PRD or?
Everything, I mean, the parcel that highlighted in red there is all the parcel. Everything else is, to the east is public right-of-way.
Okay.
There's quite a bit of extra right-of-way there.
Okay, that was my question. I didn't see the.
It looks like part of their property certainly, but it's actually a public right-of-way.
Yeah.
That's what I had wondered about when I looked at that. Last July, we had a piece of property on Enon Springs, about a half mile from this, that wanted to go from C4 to C2 because they wanted a landscaping business for storage of their equipment and we denied that and kept it C4. And I'm looking at this, thinking it's similar. We've got some residential area. I just hate to make something C2 and then we can have something like that.
Okay.
Could we add any restrictions?
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yeah, I tell you what, let's, if you could come up and give us your name and address, please, and I'll recognize you and if we may have some questions for you.
Okay, good evening. I'm Nicole Vaughn, owner of 12630 Old Nashville Highway.
I guess the question, the first question is, is there an intended use already for this or is this more speculative at this point for you?
There is not an intended use. I have some thoughts on what I would like to do there. More of maybe a small office complex, general office complex. If it's a, it could be a small restaurant. Keeping with the growth in that area is what I'm intending to do. So I do know my neighbors around there. It's a family-owned property. I was born and raised in that home there. It's been in my family for over, well, since the house was built. So I'm 50, so it's been probably sixty, fifty-five or sixty years. But what my intent is, is kind of open, but I want to keep within the guidelines. But I'm thinking of more of a small office complex, small restaurant, coffee, something to be in that, in the community. And I do know the growth is coming in that area, so I'm just keeping in line with what would make sense for the area there.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn, are you, are you the owner or the, as the applicant, are you the actual owner?
I am the applicant and owner.
Okay, so you have not yet sold the property, I assume?
No, I still own the property.
Okay, so I think to Amy's question, if we did a C2 zone, are we opening ourselves up for something that you don't even have in mind?
Mm-hmm.
That you would like to see there? Because once it's sold, that owner, if they have the zoning, they can fall under that whole umbrella of services.
Yeah, my intent is to keep the property and develop it myself.
Okay.
It's a family property, so I would want to keep the property and develop it myself.
That helps clear it up a little bit. But technically, you could sell it.
I could.
And with that zoning, it goes with it.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, other questions for Ms. Vaughn? Thank you, ma'am. We may have something else, but for right now, we're going to have a little more discussion.
Kevin, do you know, is there any other parcels that front Old Nashville from there to the light that are rezoned? Is everything still residential?
I think on this side of Enon Springs, that kind of, I don't think there's anything else that's been zoned commercial yet. The other side of Enon Springs were several that have a C2 or, I think there's one C2 at the corner and I think the rest are C4.
I think it's probably within all probability that, you know, particularly at the intersection of Enon Springs or Rocky Fork Enon Springs, you know, that we would probably see some growth toward C2 and C4 as that continues to develop out. Is that fair?
Yes.
And that's what staff would anticipate?
Especially when you're fronting a five-lane road. I mean, you can't, wouldn't expect it to remain single-family residential for sure, yeah.
Okay. Kevin, to Amy's point about allowing potentially something that we would rather not have facing the highway there, is there any way we can put a restriction at all with a zone?
Not on a C2 zone, no.
Okay, so it's a general overlay?
Yeah, it would be a general, it's C2 or it's C4 or whatever the zoning is.
But they still have to come for a site plan and all that as well, right?
Sure, no matter what the zoning is, they'd have to do that.
All right, so hypothetically, if that did come to fruition, it doesn't sound like that's where it's going, but if it did, site planning is where we could make them spruce whatever they did up?
Sure, as far as the building, landscaping, buffer, all those things can be looked at at site plan. Again, regardless of the zoning, you can do that, yeah.
It was suggested it could potentially be developed into a small office. Would that fit C4 and C2?
Yes.
And coffee shop if it were something like that?
A restaurant fits C4 as long as there's not a drive-through type.
Okay.
So like a fast food restaurant would not fit, but certainly a restaurant certainly could go in C4.
So the drive-through is the key there?
Right.
Okay.
Other questions or discussion?
Chairman, I think with the C2 zoning that we allowed next door, restricting somebody to something else when the zoning surrounding it sort of fits the zone area. I know we can do that, but is that the right thing to do if we have site plan to go through anywhere? Because I'm going back to Amy's point, it's a valid point, but everything to the right of that is already zoned C2. If you turn into the very same thing. So we're being hypothetical. We say, what if that one thing comes in there? I think then we have, we have the site plan ability to make sure whatever that one thing is, is really designed reviewed.
Okay, that's why we have the process?
Yeah.
Is exactly for that reason.
She brings up a great point, but next door could already be.
Because once we do it, it's done.
Yeah.
And your concern was there was something, somewhere else that was?
Yeah, last July, right on Enon Springs Road, which is C4, he was requesting C2 at a landscaping business that was going to have an office, but really a place to store his larger equipment.
Okay.
And he had to have the C2 for that purpose.
But surrounding zoning there was already C4. Is that what you're saying?
It was not C2.
Okay, so it was not C2 and I think.
Spot zone.
I think to maybe Mark's point and also to address you, it appears that we have similar zoning adjacent to it and that's what Ms. Vaughn is requesting.
I have to look at the map and it makes sense. I'm just thinking about that particular and then the houses, you know, the residential areas.
Which was her friends and family, I think she said, yeah.
And to address that, and, you know, in my mind, if we're going to be with the same type of buffer, whether it be C2 or C4, then we may be able to achieve the same and maintain a consistent zoning if we considered C2. It just, you know, my thoughts on it.
I think Ms. Vaughn's made it clear she's not selling the property.
Yeah.
You know, families, so she, and she kind of knows what wishes are here about what's going to go in there. So I think that, for me, that would help knowing that, hey, I'm not going to get it rezoned and then I'm going to sell it and something in the C2 zone's going to be there, so. And this is no knock on Ms. Vaughn whatsoever, but I've seen people say they aren't going to sell it and then they do. So the zoning, the zoning sticks with the property, right? But I appreciate your intent of keeping it something you'd like to see there, so.
Well, I'll take it back to are we being consistent with surrounding zoning?
There's the thing.
And I think we are here and I think we did in the other case as well. Other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. Our next item under rezoning is from Michael Daniel, Skinner Drive, west of Patience Drive, rezoning R1 to R3.
Yes, this is a piece of property. It's about seven and a half acres. It's currently zoned R1. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and PRD, which are the Colony, Green Tree, PRD to the west and Burnett Ridge, which is to the south. The land use plan would support medium density, single-family residential in this area and there's no roads on the major thoroughfare plan that are affected with this request. This is essentially requesting this, there's one tract of land here that still had an R1 zoning. They've requested it to be zoned R3, so I believe that's all I got.
Okay, Kevin, the surrounding, is that R3?
Yes, on the.
That's what I thought.
The north and east is R3. You have the Colony Estates PRD to the west, which has never developed, and then you have the Burnett Ridge, which is very recently approved on the south side there.
And I know this is early in the process. If this were to be approved, it would be your anticipation that Skinner would be stubbed into what we're calling the Colony Estates PRD?
Probably. I think we probably should preserve at least the opportunity because there is, the other piece of Skinner Drive is on the west side of Colony Estates and this, the current owner and developer is not anticipating that connection being made and that was approved, the PRD was approved to eliminate that possibility. But I think we've seen in recent months, there's been quite a bit of property that we've seen come through for development that has some of the same difficulties that that property does. And so I think, I think we would want to preserve at least the possibility that that could be connected at some point because that could connect Green Tree Drive over to Hendrick Hill next to Rock Springs Middle School, provide another way for folks to get east to west there without having to go all the way out to Rock Springs Road.
Is, would that be included in what we would consider tonight? I mean, right now, we're just looking at a zoning and my thought it would be something that we'd be looking at.
It would be something we would look at when a plaque comes in. But I was just as a answer to your question, Mark, what my thoughts would be on that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And maybe more so just to kind of notice that if it were approved, it'd be something that we'd be looking at as a body.
Right.
Okay.
Other questions for Kevin?
So with an R3, the R3 is it kind of right here in this area? So we're looking at probably the same type of homes then?
Well, it seems, at least the same lot size and that sort of thing. I don't know exactly what type of homes or what size or anything like that. It's certainly the same lots, size lots, probably similar house, maybe. Those parts of Green Tree have been there a few years.
It always has to be these days to buy the lots for what they cost.
Yeah, it may end up being a little bigger than what's already out there, yeah.
But this is just a zone.
Right.
Other questions or comments?
Has there been any indication about maintaining some of the green space that's there?
There's not at this point, no. And we wouldn't require, this is all single-family, so there would not be any buffer required or anything like that. And with an R3 or R1, you're not, there's not a minimum open space requirement or anything like that like there is with a PUD. So it would be really, other than the detention area will end up being a common area for sure. That's required now. But beyond that, there would not be a requirement for any kind of, you know, amenities or anything like that unless the developer chose to do so.
Okay. Other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, remaining. I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. Our next item under rezoning is from Rashish Shaw, Trident Drive, rezoning C2 to I2.
Yeah, this is a proposed zoning of C2 to I2. It is on Trident Drive. It's 9.88 acres. It also has frontage on Safari Drive. Shrining zoning is a mix of C2 and I2 in town and light industrial in Rutherford County. The property to the, to the north is not within the town limits. The land use plan for this area is 24 gateway, which would kind of support a mix of uses and services or both local and regional in scale, hospitality, retail, restaurant, multifamily uses are particularly appropriate for this area. There are no roads affected by this request as far as the major thoroughfare plan. Just as a informational comment, a portion of this property does lie within the floodway as well as the Hundred Year Floodplain, so development will require compliance with Article 9 of the zoning ordinance with regards to the floodplain areas, which is primarily kind of that western, northwestern part of the property there that borders the creek. So we do have a kind of a concept plan. This is just for information. This is not a PUD request at all. They did provide a concept plan, which is the top sheet on your stack there, of what they're looking at doing as far as the building and parking and that sort of thing, where access would be and those type of things, so. And I believe that's all I got.
Okay. Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, I have a question. And I don't know, I'll throw this out there to this body. First of all, if the zoning is comfortable enough, it's next door to I2. And anything commercial over there appears to be Burger King and a truck stop, right?
Right.
So we're not seeing a lot of commercial growth in that area anyway. It's kind of tucked back in there where most commercial businesses want that visibility. My question is this, this proposed facility has the docks facing our major arterials, the truck docks. And if you flip this, the truck docks would then be facing the truck docks on Safari. You're hiding it.
I think that's something we could certainly look at when the site plan comes in, for sure.
Let the front parking be the exposed portion of it, let all the truck docks be backed up to the other truck docks across the street.
And I think, I don't know if they've looked at, this may be potentially because of ease of truck, truck flow through the property or something like that, but I think that's.
I thought about that, but it's just another little.
Sure.
Just another little turn up the road.
Right. So I mean, that's certainly something we could, could look at with the site plan if this does get rezoned.
Do we know of, have we gotten to a point for an intended use at?
I mean, this is what, they're intending an industrial type building. They're a company that is, they're kind of a flooring and tile and that sort of type of company. I think they're, I think they're kind of, they got, I looked it up, they're kind of, they got their locations all over the country. I think this is kind of their Nashville area market they're looking at do for. Again, they sell flooring and tile and, you know, that type of, you know, ceramic tile or whatever.
And this is the same parcel that we looked at previously where the proposed usage was a diesel tractor trailer repair service.
Service and repair business, yeah.
I don't think found favor with either the commission or the council.
Right.
Is there somebody here that's representing? Name and address, please?
Matt Taylor, SEC 850, Middle Tennessee Boulevard. So I represent the applicant on the project. They do have a specific tenant. I don't know that I can necessarily name their name, but. They do sell flooring supplies, as Kevin said. They will have a showroom here. That showroom is not necessarily for the public. It's for like contractors to come in and see the material and pick those out. And then the rest of the building is, is the warehousing component, distribution of that. And we'd be, I don't see any reason why we couldn't flip the building so that those docks did face the other way. You could obviously do that at the site plan level, but I don't see any reason why we could not do that.
Okay. Any questions for Matt, while he's up here?
This is going to be a shipping or saving facility, correct?
Yes, sir.
My, I guess, concern I have is they got 140-plus car parking.
So I think they just maximized, I don't think we're going to have 140 employees to my knowledge. I think they just kind of maximize the land. We'll probably right-fit that whenever we get into a more detailed site plan.
If you flip this, you may very well have to affect that somewhat.
Yes, sir. We may get constrained with the flood on that side or just for access and circulation.
Okay. Other questions for Matt, while he's here? Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion and/or questions to staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Now, do we need to include anything about?
Now, do we need to include anything about looking at turning that what Mark was?
Yes, I can. I think that we would address that at site. And again, I think, uh, we've noticed, uh, the developer, if, if we intend to move in that direction, what we would be looking for from the commission. And of course, that's just not, that doesn't necessarily mean that's the only thing. Of course, as we look at the site, we can make other determinations. Any other questions, comments?
Motion to approve with staff comments?
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Charles. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This rezoning, uh, is approved. We are now on to preliminary plats. Our first one is Broly Downs, Rocky Fork, Campbell Road, Tonner, DeDolter, Crescent Homes.
Chairman, staying on this one and not commenting.
Captain?
Yeah, this is the preliminary plat for Broly Downs. This is a, is annexation and zoning request, which came through relatively recently. And so this is the preliminary plat now for the project. It's, uh, 67.69 acres. It's 212 lots. It's all in the PRD, the Broly Downs PRD. We had several comments, which were kind of standard type comments and would probably, we'd all need to keep those and it's basically comments one through five. Uh, also point out, uh, number six, this is something was, that was discussed as a part of the annexation request and just point out that there are showing the improvements to Broly Road, which were something we discussed at the time. And there, there will be required to do that when they make their connection. It'll really be in, kind of, they've got three different sections and phase one, or section one's been broken down into two phases and it would be with section one, phase two would be where that connection would be made to, which would direct traffic on to Broly Road. That would be done at that time. So, um, so just keep that one as, just as a comment there, informational comment. Number seven, they are, uh, crossing, um, a stream in a couple of locations and those details need to be submitted to Public Works. They have submitted their construction plans, but those are still under review there. Uh, we still need some of the road names. Uh, they have some of the road names shown, but not all of them. So they need to submit all, all those and, and a 911 approval for that. So we want to keep that comment. Uh, comment number nine regarding the easements and everything has been addressed, so we can remove that. Um, number 10, uh, they did submit a traffic study, um, and we had made the comment that any improvements that are recommended, um, uh, must be completed. The, the traffic study, um, essentially, uh, there was a couple of things. One, to add a shoulder, a four foot shoulder on the, the project side of Rocky Fork Campbell Road, um, as well as the northbound left turn lanes, uh, and to the development at the three project accesses. Um, talked with, uh, Charles King earlier today and, and there was no, nothing indicated on, on the accesses, the three access points are, that are coming out to Rocky Fork Campbell Road. Uh, they were just showing one, uh, one, one lane in, one lane out. Um, most of the other developments in there have had three lanes at that intersection. So you have a, a left and a right turn potentially, or, or a left, right, a left turn and maybe a right turn straight through and then one lane in. Um, he did recommend we, we can be consistent with that and, and look at those, all those three exits or access points to have those three lanes, uh, one entering and then two exiting. Uh, Derby Run and several of the others have had that. So, um, that was not part of the traffic study. That's something that is a recommendation of the engineering department, though. So, um, we did, and then I think they have a number 11. Um, there are several streets, more, most of the streets do need to have a, do meet the criteria of neighborhood collector and you have to have the 24 foot pavement width. And again, I think they've addressed that with the construction plans. Those are still under review. Uh, comments 12 and 13 are utility comments regarding some sewer, uh, details that again would be looked at on the construction plans. So I'll just kind of leave those for information, but would be looked at on, with the construction plans, which again have been submitted. Uh, number 14 has been addressed with, with regards to the walking trail location. They've, they've got that taken care of. And then on number 15 regarding the overhead electrical lines and those easements, those have, that's all shown now on the drawings. So like, can both, those two comments, 14 and 15 can be removed. Uh, 16 and 17 came from Consolidated Utility District for their water services. So, um, we'll defer to them on those two. So again, you can completely remove, uh, nine, 14 and 15. Um, and then number 10, we kind of modify that a little bit with regards to the, the three exit, three way, three lane exit points at their access, three access points. So, um, I think with that, staff would recommend approval.
I seem to recall again, conversation when we were looking at rezoning and, and just kind of, uh, concept, both here at the council level and, and from what I'm looking at, this seems to be consistent with that. Is that?
Yes.
Is that your observation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I do like what you're recommending as far as the, uh, the three lane that we were talking about as far as the entrance and exit, as far as the turn lanes that are required. And we've, that is now added as a, a part of comment 10.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Okay, we are now on to final plats. Our first item there is Elk Avenue, lots one, two and three. Elk Avenue owner, developer Philip and Susan Byer.
Yeah, this is a final plat. It's, uh, three lots, 5.18 acres. It's in an R2 zone. It's on Sam Davis Road as well as Elk Avenue. This, there's three lots proposed. One, um, is the existing house, uh, with a little, about four and a half acres left and then, um, two new lots to be created along Elk Avenue. And so since it's more than two lots, it does have to come before you all, but just as a final plat. Uh, we had a couple of comments. Major thoroughfare plan does designate Sam Davis Road as a collector and adequate roadway does exist there. Um, and then, um, just for them to add the owner's signatures prior to submitting for recording, just a, a standard comment there. So with those comments, we would recommend approval.
Got a question for Kevin on this final plat? Okay, am I, not hearing anybody has a question or that we need discussion? If not, then if that's the case, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, staff comments?
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next agenda item, uh, is from Woodmont. Section nine, it's my understanding that they've asked this to be deferred.
That is correct.
Then I will entertain a motion either to defer or not to defer.
Motion to defer.
I have a motion to defer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to defer. All those in favor of deferring this final plat signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is deferred. Our last item under final plats is Woodmont, section 10. Owner, developer, Meritage Homes.
Yeah, this is section 10 of Woodmont. It's, uh, 20 lots, uh, 13.83 acres. Uh, this is in the Woodmont PRD. Um, we had a couple of comments, again, that no roads are, uh, on the major thoroughfare plan are affected by this request. We did ask Nevada to blow off at the end of the water main and they have now taken care of that one, so we can remove comment number two. Um, so everything is in order, it's consistent with the preliminary plat and, uh, uh, PRD approval. And, uh, so with that, really no comments really left, we would recommend approval.
You heard staff's comments. Do we have any, uh, questions or discussion?
Just one question, it's probably ignorance on my part. I see a Denny Cove is listed as a street name on here. And I believe there's a Denny Brook Cove or Denny Brook Drive or something in town. Do we know that these have met 911 already?
Yeah, we've, they've had 911 approval. Yeah. So.
I just didn't want people going the wrong house.
Right.
Other questions?
And we have determined that a right turn into development is not, not necessary in terms of access into Millgate off of Blue Diamond?
As far as any additional lane is, no. I mean, there's access from Blue Diamond, uh, but not in any additional, like a right turn lane or anything like that is not required. No.
I will entertain a motion then.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from 10. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This plat is approved. We are now on to site plans. Our first item is Greystone Amenity Center, Green Tree Drive. Owner, developer, Greystone West LLC. Mitchell, it looks like you're out.
Yep. This is following the trend of this year. It's not our site plan that has expired since it last received approval in March of last year. Um, looking to get building permits for this development and, uh, site plan's expired, so they have brought it back here to y'all to review again. The, uh, amenity center is located near the front of the development off of Rocky Fork Road. Uh, it's located between phases 1A, 1B and 1C, which are the single family lots and townhomes as part of this development. As part of this amenity center, a, uh, building, house, pool house, pool, playground and mail kiosk are located within it. Vehicle use area for the site is .62 acres, which does require 2,719 square feet of landscaping. They're proposing for 2,832 square feet. Parking proposed for this is 53 spaces and handicap required is three, and they're showing for three as well. The landscape plan shows street trees lining, green tree drive with additional trees and shrubbery planned within landscape allowance throughout the parking lot area. Architecture elevations for the amenity center and mail kiosk show primary materials of fiber cement panels with layers of stacked stone near the base. And then, uh, two standard comments, which would remain, and we have one sta, staff comment regarding the sewer cleanouts. Uh, we'll, let's utilities review that, make sure it meets their satisfaction. So we'll leave staff comment one and then the two standard comments at this time. And the staff, staff would recommend approval with those comments.
And I did understand you to say that we're back here with this because the site plan had approved and we're back with the same exact site plan that was previously approved.
Correct.
Okay. Questions for Mitchell? Do I have a motion then?
Question to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve with, um, staff comments. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This site plan is approved. Our next agenda item under site plans is the USPFO Office and Warehouse, Weekly Lane. Owner, developer, State of Tennessee Department of the Military.
This is a site plan for approximately 2.22 acre warehouse and office building on the National Guard property. The proposed building is to be located near the intersection of Sixth Avenue and G Street with the front of the building facing Weekly Lane. No road access is proposed to Weekly Lane from this development, which, so we only have the existing access points to this development serve this building right here. Vehicular use area for the site is about .82 acres of additional paved surfaces and that does require 2,880 square feet of landscaping. Applicants showing for 3,620 square feet. Park required of 46 spaces are showing for 79. And that does require three handicap parking spaces and they're showing for four. The landscape plan shows a variety of shrubbery and trees planted along the parking lot parallel to Weekly Lane, as well as additional vegetation throughout the site, along drive aisles and at the base of the building as well. Architecture elevations show the building office space to be finished with metal panels and glass glazing mixture. The warehouse is proposed to be finished in two different finishes of concrete panels. The concrete panels are allowed as a primary material in industrial districts and then the metal siding may be used in industrial districts if it is not visible from an arterial street. In this instance, Weekly Lane is designated as a minor arterial street. Uh, 10.9% of the north elevation, 17.2% of the east elevation and 4.8% of the south elevation consists of metal. And for the entire building, 82% is constructed of concrete, 10% of glass glazing and other doors and 8% of metal. As presented, the architectural elevations do not meet designer review due to the metal on the building being visible from Weekly Lane. So, uh, we've had a couple other, uh, projects here in the past couple of years come through with similar with warehouse type uses and metals was shown in the building and it was visible from Weekly Lane. So, uh, basically that's the issue we have is designer review now states if your building's visible from Weekly Lane in this instance, that metal shouldn't be used on it. So that's the issue per designer review. Standard comments, uh, one through six, all, all to remain at this time. Uh, staff comment one is regarding the fire department and turning around throughout the site. Uh, have a discuss with fire department on the, on this today due to NFPA 101 and DOJ regulations. Uh, comment one can be removed at this time, so, uh, they're aware of that and okay with it. Comment two is basically regarding why I just went over with the architectural elevations not meeting designer review to, due to the metal on that building being visible from Weekly Lane. Uh, so with that, staff recommend approval with those comments and we just wanted to bring it to your attention that this is essentially what designer review states, so, um, presenting it to you as such.
I think that was my question. Do we have the jurisdictional ability to enforce design review since we're dealing with the State of Tennessee and the Department of the Military and, and also maybe even due to the location?
My opinion is they could, they could assert that we didn't, that that's not been presented yet, but, but I think if we got into a disagreement, that yeah, there could be some issues with that.
Being that they would have authority over-
That's right.
Us as far as design.
Not having to, to follow our-
To meet, to meet design, right?
Follow our designer review, yes.
Okay. Kevin, have you had any conversations with what, with the developer for this or?
Uh, no, Mitch did. I was out of the office while-
Yeah. I spoke with the developer last week and they are here as well, speak on this for what they want to on it. But, um, conversation with them is basically this is a, they have a design the way they have a design for a specific purpose. Um, it, it's more efficient in their findings on other projects and such that they've done and, uh, keeping in touch with what other buildings are. So, um, like I said, they can speak to it more and probably more in depth than I can on it. But that was brief in discussion of my talks with them.
Would the commission like to hear?
Yeah.
Okay. If we could have that person come up and just give us name and address and just talk to us a little bit about the design.
Colonel Corey Skates, Department of Military, um, and 3041 Sidco Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. Uh, the design for all of our projects, we have a set budget or when we program our money for these projects, we get a- for these projects, we get a certain amount that we program for and when we go to ask for that money, that's all the money we can get. Sometimes we can go back and ask for more money. And so when this project was originally designed back in 2008, we did not get the construction funding to bring it forward. So now, we're bringing it forward to get construction funding now and we had the limited budget that we were given. And so in order to meet our budget, we had to provide some of those metal panels due to the construction cost.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Colonel? All right, sir, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Mitchell, what's the percentage they're at to meet designer review?
And primarily, it's just kind of the front.
It's just the, just the metal on the building.
But Weekly.
Yeah.
Well, they're less than, they're meeting designer review as far as the overall percentage and all that kind of stuff. It's really just?
That one side.
Just the one side of the visibility from Weekly Lane. That's the only issue that's triggering this at all.
If you want to be technical, you can see metal from all three, from those three elevations driving, being the building is parallel to Weekly, so, but it's just metal in a hole. But they do have quite a bit of glass and glazing on there as well.
Tim, I think it goes back to your question to the page. Really?
Sort of like the schools. Sort of like the schools.
Sort of like the schools, yeah. They're gonna build what they're gonna build.
That's right.
They just come to us for courtesy.
That's right.
It sounds like we've got a, they've got a limited budget to work with that.
Well, the location of it, there's, there's quite a bit of that.
Already, yes. So as far as approval, we could, if we decided to approve as submitted, we're basically done at that point and?
Hope they can get their money.
Yeah, get their money and complete the project, so.
Yeah, just kind of say, comments one, standard comments and not including staff comment two or something like?
That's where I was headed because it looks like we wouldn't include staff comments if that was the inclination of the commission.
Just comments one through six, standard comments would be the only thing you would include.
Okay. All right, other questions for Mitchell or staff?
For what it's worth, I did also, in conversation with them, ask about possible reconfiguration of this to meet designer review. We went through all those discussions and options with them and they've been more and willing to work with us in what they can do and basically went through and thoroughly explained as to why they came to this design as well. So, they've been more and more willing to work with us on what we can at least.
Yeah, and that was my impression from, from what I've heard tonight. Other comments or questions? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll give a motion to approve with standard comments.
Only. Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve with standard comments only. Further discussion?
I think we should thank them for investing in our community.
All right, next Charles.
So noted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This site plan is approved. We are now on to mandatory referrals. Our first one under 7A is Basin A. Basin A3 easement acquisition along Harts Branch from Stan Davis Road to Highland Avenue.
Yeah, this is a project the town's preparing to repair and upsize the existing 24-inch gravity sewer line along Harts Branch from Sam Davis to Highland Avenue. This will require the acquisition of 37 permanent and 37 temporary easements. We did include maps that show the proposed locations of those easements that are to be acquired as a part of this project. The planning commission is required to review the obtaining of this property and these easements and find whether or not it's in keeping with the adopted comprehensive plan of the town and make a recommendation to council. Staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this mandatory referral? Hearing no questions or not hearing any discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this referral signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This referral is approved. We are now on to the July bond review report.
Yeah, this is a few items, not near as many as last month. Woodmont subdivision 6A, this one is complete and got all the ASBILs and everything in, so we can release that one, so we would recommend that.
Done?
Got one that's done and we can release, yes. Finally got one finished.
Yeah. All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There's a, the second one is, it was called Antique Tower. That's where it was out, it was near Antique Avenue, but it's, it was a bond that was required as a part of their BZI approval, they were required to pave the driveway to that site. The developer has now finished the road, so they can just pave a much shorter driveway, but they still need to do that. They, we're gonna check on the status of that and get back to me. I haven't heard back from them, but we, so we would recommend an extension on that one. It's just a pavement, a driveway, it's not a big deal, but we just need to get that done. Creekstone Village, this is one that we were, been working with this, or trying to work with this developer for a while. We would recommend a three-month extension on here to get, they, he did reach out and we can meet week after next, and so we're gonna try to get that set up to kind of get him on site to, so he can kind, he can meet with our inspectors and everybody to know exactly what he needs to do to finish that one up.
I'm sorry, did you say that you have it next week?
We haven't, we're trying to get one set up for week after next, not next week, but week after.
I emailed her.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we're, we're trying to get this one finished up because we need to. This is one that's lagged too long, everything's finished, everything, oh, the houses are finished rather. Folks that live out there are ready to be done, so.
Okay.
So, we would recommend an ext, one more extension on this one, just to try to get him on site, you know, next, week after next to hopefully get the ball rolling on that one.
Even if it goes, the expiration date's August, only two months.
That's August 6th, yeah, extending it three, up to the, that would get it to November basically, if it was our three-month extension. August 6th is the expiration date, so. Hundred Point Annex, section three, phase one. Did talk to that developer. He's, phase two is nearing completion of the, kind of that initial infrastructure installation and it's his intent to provide ASBILs for both phases as well as finish these last items, clean up in phase one as a part of that completion of phase two. So, or the initial development of phase two, so we would recommend six months on that to let him finish that up. And then Cedar Hills, section two, phase one. This one is, is basically very, this is the end of their maintenance period. They've just got a couple of items, cleanup items left. He had indicated to me last week that everything should be wrapped up in the next couple of weeks, so we would recommend release of that. That's an escrow account, so we can release it really at any time, so we would recommend to release that one when everything is complete, so. And that's what I've got.
Okay. We've heard the bond review report. Is there any questions for staff on this?
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the bond review report.
I have a motion to approve the bond review report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the July bond review report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The bond reviewer report is approved. Staff comments?
I don't have anything.
Other business? Anything from the commission? Charles always gotta ask you if you have anything.
Yes, sir.
All right, just want to make sure. We then stand adjourned.